First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote on that, and I've asked Colleen to do a rotating roll call vote, starting with District 1. Go ahead.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moshe.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Waylon.
Aye.
I see no citizens to be heard, so we'll move on to approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Not a call for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moshe.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Next thing is the approval of the minutes from March 24th. Do you have those in your packet?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, take a vote on that.
Commissioner Moshe.
Jenny, you approve the minutes?
Yes, sorry, when they're rotated, it's hard to do my mail.
Okay.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. And with that, we'll go into the shared funding with the City of Morehead for the wood burning furnace. We have Kirk.
Steve.
Handle that.
And Steve Moore as well.
Steve will come in forward. Steve from City of Morehead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Moore is the Public Works Director for the City of Morehead, and we were approached by the City of Morehead to share in some costs as far as the wood burning stove that they're going to be purchasing. And the main reason they want to purchase this furnace, basically, is to take care of any wood waste from primarily the Emerald Ash Bore, which will be coming to Clay County fairly soon. It hasn't gotten here yet, but it keeps moving up here as it gets closer and closer all the time. So they approached us. We met with SAW Waste Advisory Committee and also Commissioner Waylon, Commissioner Campbell, and it was approved at that point in time. The one thing that I do want to point out, and Colleen was quick to point out, that my math was pretty poor. When I put this thing together, 50% of the cost, the costs were $172,000, the estimated cost, and half of that, 50%, is $86,000 rather than the $65,000, which I had listed on the board item. That's consistent with what we discussed at the SAW Waste Advisory Committee, and so it was my error that that was the cost. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Moore, who's going to talk a little bit about what they would like to do with their facility and their project.
Thanks, Kirk. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for your time today. Yeah, we operate a compo site. Oh, is this one? We operate a compo site off of Highway 75 that deals in our yard waste for citizens in the county as well as wood waste, and we are running out of space in our compo site. We've taken about 4,000 tons annually of wood waste, and we have no great, good way of disposing it. We used to chip it. We used to open burn, but I can no longer light up the pile and let her go. So we did some controlled burning a couple of years ago, and it was very time consuming. We had the time because we had a couple of mild winters. Well, as you know, the last two winters have not been mild, so we hadn't had time to even do anything with the wood waste. So we're at max capacity right now. And then, as Kirk mentioned, chipping, well, before that, chipping is an option, but it's expensive. It does reduce the volume, and you can store more of it, but we don't have any place to take it after that. And if you stack it too high, it can spontaneously combust, which happened in 2014, I think, like a week before I took over, and it burned for three months, smoked for three months. So we don't want to do that without a market for our wood chips. In addition to our current status of what we have in the compo site, if Emerald Ash Bore gets here, and I shouldn't say if, it's when, it's in the I-94 corridor, it's kind of making a pincer movement from Canada and the south. So we have 7,700 public trees that are ash in the City of Morehead, and once it arrives, it has a, it's 100% mortality rate for ash trees over a 12 to 15-year period. So it does take time, but it's an interesting curve if you look at it. It starts out, the first five or six years, pretty flat, and then it does a COVID-19 movement and goes, you know, straight up and then over. So once it's here, and then we could have it here. Sometimes it's a couple of years before it starts showing up, and we can detect it in the ash trees. We hope it's not here yet because we're still working on plan for that. So once that happens, 30% of our urban forest population is ash, but that doesn't even include the private population of ash trees, which I don't have an inventory of. So we estimate it's around 25% of that private urban forest, or private forest, private trees. So we did some research and found the air burner fire box. It's been, it's being used, and it's gaining in popularity to deal with wood waste around the country. I think Ferguson Falls has one, but one of the things, and then the one we specked out can burn eight to 10 tons of wood waste per hour. So we would be able to get a handle, start, it would take us a few months to get a constant operation to get rid of our current wood waste pile, but we want to get that down and under control before Emerald Ash Bore gets here. It does require a Title V permit. Some higher burns in McDonnell to do the permit process. It's an extensive process, and it takes about a year.
How many?
We're trying to expedite that, and it costs about 10,000, or 20, $20,000 to process the Title V permit.
Excuse me, you have a question there?
It takes eight years, did you say?
No, it takes about a year.
Oh, a year, okay.
Yes. So we're, Burns &amp; McDonnell, we had a meeting with the PCA, Atelcon, and trying to get that expedited, but I don't know if that's possible, given their staffing right now, probably not. But we want to get this fire box in and ready to go, and so once the permit is approved, that we can start operations. Because if we have to wait another year, we're trying to expand the compo site to the north into the, to make more capacity. Because if we got to wait a year, we're going to, we're going to be packed even tighter.
Is there any reason they want to issue the permit once you make the request?
No.
So, because if we buy it and then we don't get the permit, that would not be a good thing.
Yeah, that's a great point, Commissioner Waylon. There isn't any, because the other option is to open burn, which, it doesn't make quite sense to me in the self-licking ice cream cone that is the MPCA, that we are going to significantly reduce our air emissions by using this rather than open burning, but we have to go through an extensive Title V permit process.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one thing, I mean, this is one thing we've talked about before. We had to get a Title V out at the landfill, and this is one thing that really gives me heartburn. PCA, it cost us, I think, $14,000 to prepare the permit from the Burns &amp; Mack, and then we had to pay a permit application fee to the PCA of $17,000, and then they charged us another $17,000 or $20,000 to review the permit. So, the long and short of it is, it's cost twice as much for the PCA to get the permit from the PCA than it did to actually prepare the permit, which just seems goofy, but that's editorial comment, and I apologize.
What I haven't said is, why am I here asking for help from Clay County? My plan was to purchase this with my forestry reserve funds, but I don't, right now, my reserve funds have been depleted over the course of a few years to balance my budget. As I went through a, we are still below our monthly forestry fee where it was in 2011. We had cut it back in 2012, and then it remained stagnant for five years, and then I finally got an increase of 14 cents per household per month in 2019, after I dropped the mosquito fee, 14 cents to offset that. So I'm not building any forestry reserves, and I don't have enough to pay for this air burner and keep my 25% requirement for reserves compared with my operating budget. That's, I would, you know, so I'm asking for help because of funding, my lack of funds in my forestry reserve budget. So, that's why I'm here.
I guess my first question would be the Kirk one. Is your budget handled this?
Mr. Chairman, yes, we've looked at the budget, and as you know, we have some significant items coming up. The biggest one, at least the most immediate one, is the landfill expansion. That's $2.5, $3 million, and we have reserves to take care of that, and we also have enough money for 50% of this, and I don't think it will impact overall cost as we move forward.
This furnace, could that be placed in such an area that the heat can be captured from it, or?
That's a great question. This one in particular cannot do that. They do have energy generating versions, but they're like $1.5 million. They're a lot more expensive, and then you have to have a distribution system to distribute that electrical power.
Right. I didn't know whether we could put that with a building, a Clay County building or a City of Morehead building that could heat the building or something like that, or?
Yeah, this version does not produce energy.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Is it likely that there'll be any opposition from the EPA on this permitting process?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't believe so. I don't think the EPA will even be involved with this. I think the PCA is responsible for all the air quality, and, you know, as I said, the option, or as Steve said, the option is, and this is another crazy thing, is that, you know, for this type of facility, you need a permit, but if he did the open burning, which is a lot more intrusive, he doesn't need a permit. So I really don't anticipate that there'll be any issues with PCA. The other thing that could cause some problems, as Steve mentioned, is that, you know, they're having the same issues as far as the virus that we're having. I mean, everybody's working from home, and so trying to get this done in a timely fashion may be kind of a challenge, but I really don't anticipate it's going to be that significant.
Does that mean it could take more than a year for this permitting process?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I mean, theoretically, it could, but I really don't think it will. You know, we have a really good relationship with the PCA despite some of my opinions of them, and I know the city does as well. So I think that it's going to be something that we can achieve in a timely fashion.
What is the time limit as far as, say, we approve this? When can this be in operation? I mean, I realize, without, let's forget about the permit right now. When is there a list that you could get this in operation?
If we order it, I think they said it's a 12 to 16-week delivery time. So we have three, we're three or four months out from it being delivered. Once it's dropped off, we just add diesel fuel to the, to it and start it up. So it doesn't, it's a self-contained unit. So as soon as it's in position in the compo site, we could, we could use it.
So we could use it. This year, we get the permit, but we can't use it until we get the permit?
No. And Mr. Chairman, I should point out also that this is just not a City of Morehead facility. I mean, the entire county will be able to use that as well. We have a significant amount of wood waste out of our landfill right now that we need to deal with, and at some point in time, obviously, we would be using this furnace as well.
We had a lot of discussion about this at SWAC, and I think we all agreed that this is beneficial to the whole county, so.
Well, we just had that situation a few months back, that we had to bring some trees that were dropped off in a certain area, so we had to find a place for them, so.
And that could be used for that as well, because, yeah, I felt bad turning away that, you know, need last year with the county, but I just didn't have room, and I had no place to, anything to do with it. Now, this would give us the capability to do that.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I should point out here. I don't know if you all realize this, because we don't have a lot of signs in City of Morehead, but the City of Morehead is Tree City for how many years now?
31.
31 years. So this is, this is part of their endeavor as well.
Okay. Kevin, you got something to say? You must have something to say.
Yes. I want to bring your attention to item number 3E, which is MOU between Clay County and the city regarding the use of this. Just talked a little bit about the, this being used also by other communities. Of course, that Ash Bore is not just going to be in Morehead, it's going to be throughout Clay County. And we might come across some times where we might want to do, as Commissioner Gross just mentioned, about maybe some cleanup from trees and flooding or whatever, but what, what language do we have in that MOU? I haven't seen the MOU. I know in talking with Steve and Kirk, you know, I think it was pretty much mutual agreement of what Clay County wanted out of this, but I haven't seen the MOU yet, and I, I think if we approve this, we have to approve it with the, with the understanding of an MOU.
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Campbell. We don't have the MOU drafted yet, but we could come back with the MOU, you know, in a couple of weeks with, for final approval, if that would be so desired.
Don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to hold up the vote on the 50% cost share today, but I, but I think it should be contingent upon that MOU being satisfactory to both parties.
Absolutely, fair enough.
I don't think that would be a problem, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Campbell.
One more question. Say there's a repair coming up that costs $10,000 repair of this furnace. We share costs on that, or are you, Morehead share, takes that?
That would be, it would be our asset to maintain and operate. So we would, that's part of the, that would come out of our budget from all the disposal fees we charge for customers to drop wood waste off at our compo site.
And Mr. Chairman, that would be included.
We built that into our operation.
That would be included in the MOU.
Okay, I mean, right now, we're just voting on the cost share of buying the furnace. Know what a cost share?
Contingent, right, contingent on the approval of the MOU.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would move the cost share on this burner, contingent upon the satisfactory MOU between both parties.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Campbell.
Kevin, you vote yes or no?
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moshe.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll look for that MOU. Are we going to have that in a few weeks, or what are we looking at?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think it'll take that long. We'll have it by next week.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go into Sheriff Mark M. Tean, who's going to talk about SRO wages for Hillwood, Clinton, Felton, and Eulyn Hittodoll.
Good morning, and thanks for having me. With our current situation, our SRUs, sorry, these are SROs, are no longer working in the school district right now due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We did bill out Eulyn Hittodoll School and DGF School for their time, and both schools had paid in full prior to this pandemic happening. The superintendent in Eulyn Hittodoll reached out about possible reimbursement back to their school district for the time that our SRO is not currently in the school district. That would be Deputy Reno. Deputy Reno has currently been reassigned to emergency management, assisting Lieutenant Tweetin with the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as other duties related to his position, and we're using her in our office full-time at this point. To be fair, we also thought about reimbursing back DGF schools because our deputy that works at DGF School is not in the school at this point. He's been reassigned to the Support Services Division. He's been assisting with warrants and transports, the courthouse, and civil service. Therefore, we're looking for the approval to reimburse back Eulyn Hittodoll School for Deputy Reno's time. Our 50% share is going to be $7,747, and then DGF, they pay all of Jeff Lee's wage for the school year. Therefore, the reimbursement back to DGF would be $18,710.16.
Your budget handled that?
Hopefully. That's what we're here to talk about.
This was discussed and picked last week, and I think everybody was in agreement that it's the right thing to do with, with the school district, so.
I feel that way, too, because since we are utilizing the people, you know, a lot of times, why should we take up the salary of someone else's position, you know, but in this case, we are using the people, and they are fully employed, so.
And the one thing we are doing with Deputy Reno's salary is we're putting her time, we're logging that in under COVID-19, considering that her entire time now as the Assistant Emergency Manager, she is working with the COVID crisis. So we're hopefully going to be able to get some of that reimbursed back to us.
Good point. I'll make a motion for the reimbursement.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jenny.
Hi, I just want to say that I know we all know this is valuable, but specifically these two individuals are still present in the communities and countywide, and it just reiterates how important having those SROs in our school is. So I will gladly support this motion.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes, I support what we're doing here, too, but I do it with, I just want to make some comments here. When we, when we originally worked out this SRO agreement with both of these school districts, it was, it was a cost share based on a school year. So when we did this, we knew that our revenues would have to be a certain amount to cover, whether it's 5/12ths or whatever of the school year, of the year, and then the school district did, did the balance. My, my question becomes, I agree with the sheriff when he said that this is being coded for the COVID-19. It certainly, it certainly is a cost that is attributed as a result of this, you know, this declaration. The question being, the way our, the way our contracts were written, who, who should be, who should be filing the claim for that cost? Should it be the school districts, or should it be the county? I, you know, I think we need to be careful there. It's one thing for us to code it, but if they turn around and say, well, your contract said that it was supposed to be, you know, 9/12ths paid by, by the school district, why are you putting in the claim? I, that's my only question, because I want to make sure that whether it's the school district or the county, that one of us gets reimbursed for this. It's, what it becomes is an extra cost to the county.
Yes, I think, I think with us doing the reimbursement here and getting it on record, I think that would help us file that claim as well, considering this is a, this is a direct result of the COVID-19, and we would be the one that would be filing that claim with, with the reimbursement back. And since we are the ones that do technically pay her salary, I think we would be the ones that would file the claim. The way the contract is written, it really isn't state, doesn't state really who would make that claim, but I think with the way we're doing it, and we are paying her salary, and I think we would be the ones to submit that claim.
All right, I just, I, I'm okay with that explanation, Sheriff, but having worked with FEMA before, when it gets right down to the RAS tax, you know, you have to have your i's dotted and your t's crossed, and I, I just want to make sure that we're going to be in the right shape to do that.
Well, if we wouldn't, if they wouldn't approve our claim, would, the school could put in for it then, couldn't they, or?
I think the school could, you know, maybe potentially put in for it if our claim did not get approved. I have spoke to Lieutenant Tweetin about this, you know, our emergency manager, and he does agree that we do log her time as COVID-19, and that we do submit her time to FEMA as well.
All right. Okay. Did we have a motion on that?
We did, and a second.
We should take some notes here. Okay, we do have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Okay, we take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Waylon.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moshe.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we go into Kathy McKay and her group. Jamie, Josh, everybody coming up?
Good morning.
Morning, Kathy.
Thank you for having us again. Cheryl's just handing out information on our, our latest numbers. And so as you can see, a number of positive cases. Of course, we expect that it keeps going up in Minnesota as well as around the nation, and then we have 19 in Clay County, and that was as of yesterday. So you see the total numbers of those that are tested in Minnesota so far. So the 28,128 that have been tested by both the public health lab and some external labs. So 986 cases out of the 28,128 that were tested, and of course, we have, what, 5.7 million?
5.3.
5.3 million? Okay, 5.3 in Minnesota. So you see the number of positive cases of 986 out of that, 5.3 in Minnesota. So the number is, we'd like to keep it low like it is, so that, that is absolutely great. The US cases, 352,000 confirmed, over 10,000 deaths now, and then there's close to 19,000 that have recovered in the US. And then globally, it's 1.3 million confirmed, 73,000 deaths. And again, these numbers change daily. So we want to be careful about getting too hung up on the numbers. We were looking back, it was almost exactly a month ago, on March 6th, we had our first presumptive case in Minnesota. So on March 6th, today's April 7th, so about a month ago, that was the first presumptive case in Ramsey County. Clay County had our first case March 19th. So that was our first case that was, which is less than a month ago. So you see how the numbers are comparing to that.
So according to this report, half the people who have tested positive have already recovered?
Yes.
470, you said 470 are no longer isolated. Are they considered recovered, or?
Right, exactly, yes. Who no longer need isolation, 470. That is correct, yes. And then did I say the, I think the 30 deaths in Minnesota as well? 223 were hospitalized. So, you know, the exposure, you know, was about travel to begin with. Now, of course, they know it's community spread, so it's person-to-person. So we, our message is still the same about social distancing. That is the way we can mitigate this, is, is social distancing. We can't, you know, this is a marathon, not a sprint, as they describe it. So we continue to, to have to implement that as tough as it is in regards to, you know, the stay-at-home orders. That's the only way we can, you know, stop this, you know, level of infections going on. This spread, community spread, is from person-to-person. So if we can break that cycle from person-to-person, that's how we'll keep the numbers down, and that's how we'll keep the number of people that are infected and, and develop the actual COVID. So we really are stressing that people adhere to that. Sometimes we get lax and think, well, you know, our numbers aren't that high yet. We have to not get lax. This is a time- We have to not get lax. This is a time we still need to continue to, you know, we have to change the trajectory of, of this COVID. So we do need to, that social distancing is what everyone can do. We need everybody to do that. So six feet, if you're out in the, in the public around people, remember, one of the national experts said, keep in mind, just think about, everybody could carry the virus. So six feet distancing is how we can avoid that spread, and that's just really important for everybody to think about. Go out in, in the public if you need to as far as getting your groceries, essential things, your medication, but keep that six-foot distancing. Some of the places actually have marks in the grocery stores where, you know, if you're standing in line, you, you can see where the six-foot distancing is. Others do not. Some of the establishments are limiting the number of people that are coming in. But we really just keep that in mind. We don't want to be lax about that. That's a very important thing that we all can do. I know we talk about it all the time, but we need to really stress this has to continue. We have to continue this for a while. The governor's stay-at-home order was through the tenth, which is Friday. He, he hasn't determined yet if he's extending that and what that will look like. I suspect there will be some extension to that. So I'm sure he'll be announcing that soon about what will happen after that tenth, about stay-at-home order. We really need people to adhere to this. It's, it's very, very important. So that's the message. Everybody has to do their part. We as citizens in the community can change the trajectory of this virus. We can, because it's person-to-person spread, so let's really adhere to that social distancing. That's, that's just vitally important. I know I've said it about sixteen times now, so we just want people to be mindful of that. They also.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes.
I saw Cheryl pass out on a thing on masks, on mask face coverings. What's your opinion on that? Are we, are you going to get to that yet?
I will, right now. Thank you for noticing that. So the federal government put out new, for a while, they were saying, you know, masks for the, for those that work in healthcare particularly, because the shortage of N-95 masks and surgical masks is evident across the nation. So we still want to keep those masks for those that are really directly working with those that are ill, like in the hospital settings, healthcare workers. But the federal government put out just a thing about masks. So now they say if you want to wear a mask out, if you're out in the general public. Now, keep in mind, these would be homemade masks. We don't want people to try to be searching for the surgical masks and the N-95 masks. So they can be homemade masks, but they are a secondary protection. So we've got Vanna and Vanna showing the masks. The primary protection, of course, is hand washing, covering your cough, social distancing. Now, if you get a homemade mask, which we had some of our retired nurses make, those are to protect other people. So you wear a mask, you're protecting the, you might have the virus, you're protecting, spreading it to another person. These masks are not going to protect yourself. They're going to protect everyone around you. So it's not essential. They're not requiring you to wear that. There's a lot of discussion about that. But it, it's, it's not a substitute for social distancing. We don't want people to think, I have a mask on, now I can get closer to people. That's not the case. It is wearing the mask, so you, if you're a carrier, will protect the people that you're encountering that may be closer than six feet.
Well, how do you contact? I mean, it's protecting the other people. So if I'm spreading it and they have a mask on and I have a mask, I mean, or don't have a mask on, how do they catch the virus? I mean, what is it they catch the virus from?
Well, the virus have droplets, so respiratory droplets. And again, that's why they can, you know, we want to clean surfaces, because if I'm coughing and I have COVID, I can have droplets that land on surfaces. But I also, it also can land person to person. So you'll get it if, if you get it in your eyes, nose, mouth, the droplets can spread. That's why we say six feet. So you can, the, the studies have shown, as best as they can study this, that if you're six feet and further away, the droplets won't necessarily reach you. So if I'm further than six feet away, I'm coughing, I have COVID, my droplets aren't going to reach you. They will if you're within that six feet, they can. But six feet and over is the protective area. So if you're wearing a mask, you're just, you might be a carrier because you might not have symptoms. We can carry the virus and they're, they're estimating about forty-eight hours before you actually even have symptoms. So we can be carriers. We didn't even realize we have it yet. We're not ill. We might have picked it up from someone else. So that's why the masks are, I might be a carrier. If I wear a mask and I get closer than six feet to people, I can protect those people from my virus that I'm spreading. So it still doesn't take the place of social distancing. It does not take the place of washing your hands. That's why it's not mandatory. It's optional. It's just another way to protect. If you are out in a crowd, then you can protect people from yourself.
Very good.
Does that make sense? Okay. Cheryl will talk about essential services in a second, but we, I wanted to also note that we had a conference call with our hospitals on the Fargo side. They wanted to just update us on, they've been working on surge capacity plans. So what will happen if their hospital, if they're full, in their hospital settings? What is their plan then for dealing with, you know, on overflow of that and the number of COVID cases they may see? So they've been working on this for quite some time and they have plans in place for if they have overflow, where will people go? So they're working on those kinds of plans. They're working on getting supplies and equipment. Some of that will come through the North Dakota State cash. Some of that, if they need a lot of ventilators, everybody across the nation is looking at ventilators. If they need those, you know, they'll have to determine where, when and where they can get those. So they're ramping up in the event that they're going to be overloaded with cases. So they just wanted to update, you know, Commissioner Haney was on there and our county administrator and the mayors and some others. They just wanted to keep the, the communities informed about, they have plans and they're working on those. Sanford also has implemented a rapid test for their high priority patients. So this would be the COVID test. They can do it in ninety minutes, or the results come in ninety minutes. And it's really for those that are hospitalized, healthcare workers and those that are in concierge care living, like the long-term care people. This test is available now in Fargo, at their Fargo location and also at their Sioux Falls location. So that, that's a good thing, that it's only going to take ninety minutes for those that are in the high, high priority categories. So that, that is a positive thing. We're still working on our plans for, what if we get a case in our detox facility? And then also for the homeless, homeless population, so we're still, we're still working on those plans as well. I'll let Cheryl talk a little bit about our, what we call our, our task to provide essential services.
Good morning. So Minnesota Department of Health is doing the monitoring for people that are positive with COVID and they're recovering from home. They're also monitoring basically the contacts of that positive person. So when they get notified that a person is positive for COVID-19, they call that individual and find out who their close contacts have been, which would include most likely household members, if they, you know, their employment, if they have close coworkers there. So they're calling them twice a day and asking them to check their temperature and everything. And then they also let local public health know if this individual is at home and they have no transportation, they need some essential items such as groceries or they're unable to get medications delivered that they normally take. That is where local public health jumps in to assist, to make sure that these individuals within our county that are being monitored for isolation and quarantine, that we can make sure that they get the items that they need. Right now, we have three individuals that we have been contacted. They send us an encrypted email and let us know who those individuals are. And we are, are very careful to protect their privacy as we have been directed to do. And we give them a call and check and see, how can we help you? So we have some of our public health nurses that are compiling a list of grocery stores that are able to deliver, pharmacies that are able to deliver and the area that they're able to deliver in, since we know we, at some point in time, we could have individuals up in the Ullin-Hittardal area that may need some items. So we're putting all that plan together so that we can work together to make sure that our Clay County individuals and citizens are taken care properly.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions about any of the information or anything?
Very good update so far, thank you.
Okay.
The two good to speak to?
Anything?
Just came to say hi?
Josh, anything? No?
Okay, I guess that's it.
No, thank you so much for that update. Very good information. Okay, with that, we'll take Highway Department. Oh, we got a bid opening at nine fifteen. We'll take your other item first and.
Morning.
Good morning, Dave.
We have two items on our agenda today. First item being approval of the dust control quotes. It's our annual receipt quotes for county highway department locations, as well as we provide that number to the local residents in Clay County. We send out letters directing them in contact with the low bidder and then they, they pay their bill and then we kind of work with the contractor, putting together a map, making sure that we got the roads ready to go. If we need to add gravel here and there, we do that. We got two bidders this year. We had Knife River Materials who did the work for us last year. They bid a dollar eighty per gallon and Glacier Enterprises, he's a local company. We've also hired him for spot jobs because he is local and he's quick. And his price came in at a dollar twenty-eight per gallon. And I guess we like to recommend the dollar eight, a dollar twenty-eight per gallon moving forward for 2020. It's eight cents per gallon more than last year. But I guess I feel like in working with Glacier, I think they'll do a good job and should fit within our budget and they should do a good job.
Very good.
I'll make the motion to approve the dust control.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, we got a motion, the second, to approve the quote for dust control for Glacier Enterprises that are dollar twenty-eight. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Mr. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Moser.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Aye.
Okay. Close enough to nine fifteen, or you want to wait another two minutes?
No, we're good. So the, the language read that the bids were due at nine o'clock and we tried to get ourselves on the agenda shortly thereafter so that we can, in case there's electronic bidding. You know, if you remember in the past, we've had a couple of issues with the electronic passcode keys coming through. It all came through. We have a total of five bids today. We've got four of them, correct, four?
Yep.
Four of them electronically submitted. And in order for an electronic bid to come through, they do have to make sure that they've got their bid bond, the amount of five percent, as well as acknowledging any addendums and that sort of thing. And it says right on the electronic portal here if it's complete or not, so if there was.
Otherwise, yeah, otherwise it wouldn't accept them and we wouldn't see their number at all. It wasn't complete.
Right, and we kind of had that issue before. We had one that was, that was in the queue, but it wasn't complete and we weren't able to read it. But all, all four electronic bids that we have here do say complete, with, like I said, which means they've got their bid bond, the amount of five percent submitted, and you can see there's a PDF on here. And we'll verify all this later, but it, it does look like the four bids electronically are complete. We do have one paper copy, so I guess I'd like to read the four electronic numbers here. And I guess I should back up a little bit. This is for the melon overlay project on County Road Thirty-three. It's a project that did come to us years ago from some local residents input at our five-year plan meetings. It's been quite a few years since this road was initially paved and it's ready for a fresh melon overlay. Our engineer's estimate for this project is one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. So just under one point six million. I believe it's four point five miles, or is it six point?
Six point five.
Six point five miles, yeah. So it goes from the north edge of the city limits of Holly up to County Route Twenty-six, so. I'll read these in order that they came in. First online bidder is Central Specialties, I believe they're out of Alexandria. Like I said, they do have a complete bid here and their bid is one million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. One million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Our next online bidder is Mark Sand and Gravel. They do have a complete bid and.
Where are they from?
I think they're from Ferguson Falls, down that area. We've worked with Mark Sand. I know they did paving for the county in Barnesville years ago. They're a good firm. They do a lot of county work. Their bid is one million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. One million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred forty-seven point nine two. And the next bidder is Anderson Brothers Construction. They're out of Brainerd. They're a big company. I know they do a lot of work in the Lakes area. They do a lot of MINDOT work. Their bid is one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. One million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, nine twenty-nine point one zero. And the last bidder is RJ Zabrow and Sons out of East Ground Forks. They most recently paved our county road nine, just north of Dilworth there. And they do have a complete bid, like I said, as does the other four. Bid is one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Very, very close. One million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, six thirty-five point six seven. And we'll read the paper copy that we received. First, we'll verify that they've met the requirements. They've got a bid bond here and it says five percent. And I don't believe there, was there any addendums?
Nope.
No addendums on this one. And the last bidder we have is Northern Improvement, they're from Fargo. Northern Improvement's bid, one million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, one fifty-five point four five. One million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-five point four five. I think the bids, the bids came together. We weren't sure where the oil prices with the Batuminas oil were going to come in. Since we got the project advertised and finished our designs, I think the price per barrel has dropped quite a bit and has continued to maintain in a good level for the county. What we'd like to do is bring our bids back, analyze these. You know, we don't have a lot to analyze. The electronic portion is really good when it works. It takes care of a lot of different things. There's, there's no way to make an error because it's all done electronically. Sometimes with the paper copies, we'll grab matting machine, we'll double check them and a lot of times there is sometimes big mistakes. Most of the time, it's little bits. The other thing we want to do is kind of verify with the situation that we're in, that construction's moving forward and that everything's good. So I guess I'd like to recommend we, we contingentally approve this, but we're going to bring it back at a later time. Contingentally approving it on, is there two things that you had on that, or is that?
Yep.
So we'd like to, like I said, we'll, we'll bring this back at a later time.
Yeah.
We're going to verify everything and verify that with the regards to MINDOT, that the labs are open and everything's moving forward for the summer.
Okay. With that, any questions for Dave? Now I'm looking for a motion to approve for this contingent on them reviewing the bids.
Move approval.
I'll take the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, you'll review these bids and we'll come back to us next week or a week later. Okay, you'll review these bids and we'll come back to us next week or a week later or whatever.
Right, sometime the next week if you...
Okay.
We do have a bid opening next week too, so we'll be here.
All right, very good. Okay, we got a motion, second, we'll go.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you got any to send us today?
I don't have time here for a PIC meeting, unless you need an update on anything.
Anything on the flood though, are you okay?
Uh, we're going to do secondary dress but nothing real major. Had a, I don't know if Dave talked about, there was one county road that got washed out this morning by Ullin, but it's um, do flood call work or something like that.
Okay, very good. Okay, we're going to committee reports. Kevin, you want to start us off today?
Sure. I had just two meetings and they were both yesterday. The first one was our diversion authority executive chair's meeting. Went over a few things, COVID-related and processes and what some things that might be delayed. We did, we did get an update from the executive director regarding some master service agreement adjustments and what those are. I think what what Joel Paulson is trying to do is trying to take some of these duties that were held by Jacobs and trying to create more of local. And I think in his last report to us, I think he's, we were seeing close to a two million dollar savings on the project just for some of the things he's done so far. So it's, those are good things that Joel is doing on behalf of the diversion authority. We did, we did get a little update from John Shockley regarding the WIPPA application. There might be a, there might be a little bit of some delays going on there too as a result of the COVID. One of the things that we're going to have to watch for is in this whole financing is what are the impacts of the sales tax collections and for how long would we anticipate that shortage in sales tax collections versus what is projected? So those are things that are being worked on and they're certainly all things that we think we can have answers for, but but and then Grant, just for your information, I think they're planning a special meeting for April seventeenth and that of the diversion authority and that is going to be to, they're going to be presenting a P three educational meeting. So I I'm not sure how they're going to handle that electronically or whatever, but if you can just kind of tentatively keep an eye on April seventeenth as a special meeting.
Will do.
Then yesterday afternoon...
Just a minute, Kevin. Grant, you have a question?
No, I just said, I got that.
Okay, very good, go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, and then yesterday afternoon, we did have our regional juvenile detention meeting. I attended that via phone. The biggest news there is I think we're looking at a certificate of occupancy maybe this week or next week. You know, they continue to work out some of these last, last-minute deals regarding training issues, stuff like that with Joel Olson. But then maybe we can have Steve or Grant were also there, maybe they can fill in. But that appears to be just about wrapping up, so. I know we had, we've been planning for a, an open house for that and obviously with things going on right now, that's probably going to be on the table maybe till July or something if we, if we do something at all, so. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Jim? Excuse me, Kevin, did you have something else? No, okay.
Oh, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday last week, I took part in the COVID nineteen press conference over at Fargo City Commission. And then on Friday, I believe it was, I attended the Clay County Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Committee meeting through telephone hookup. And April is Children's Mental Health Month and we had reports from the various providers. And yesterday, I attended the COVID nineteen surge meeting with, along with County Administrator Larson and Public Health Director Kathy McKay. And that was also through a Skype hookup. And we heard about potential options available to the community to deal with the peak of the COVID nineteen pandemic in our area. And that, those are my reports.
Okay, Grant?
Uh, let's see, and we had PIC meeting last week and had a discussion on the sheriff's issue that he brought forward that we approved today and had a lot of discussion on on dealing with the homeless issues that the COVID is going to cause or be causing. So I think we're going to have more discussions in PIC today on that. And let's see, yesterday we had rural counties meeting and most of the discussion was about the effects that the COVID is having on rural Minnesota and on, you know, how to deal with those in in the near future. And let's see, we had the Detention Center construction meeting yesterday also, Kevin already reported on that. I think, Steve, we were talking next week for a certificate of occupancy for the building, weren't we?
I think we're open by Monday, Monday for sure, that we'll have all of the approvals from the Department of Corrections to to our inspectors.
So it's just about done that project, which is really good things. And that was it for me.
Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I had a meeting with the Cal Clay Food Systems Advisory Commission. As you know, we've been doing Facebook lives to make sure that food resources are being, people are aware of the food resources in the community in terms of food, pantries and gift food. One item that they've recently been discussing is public health and food work appointments and such. So I know that Clay County Public Health has recently sent something out on social media in terms of connecting with those folks, so I appreciate that effort. I had a MetroCog Executive Committee meeting where we discussed items pertaining to COVID as well, trying to navigate this issue. And then I had a Lakeland Medical Hall Center Executive Committee meeting where we discussed some issues that are going on with Lakeland, a reduction in services with those school-based therapeutic services has caused some issues, obviously with schools not in physical session, that's changed that. And then they have changed across the agency staffing levels from forty-hour work week to thirty-six-hour work week. The work has not really gone down, but due to transportation and that kind of thing, they think they'll still be able to keep on the same levels. So that concludes my report.
Hey, thank you. And the meetings I had was the PIC committee, which Grant's already talked about, but there again, we had a long discussion on the homeless population, what's going to happen with them if they contact, where do you house them and stuff like that? So we're looking at different options of housing homeless people, what's available and we're going to further that, we're going to continue that discussion today, I think, at our meeting. We already had the resource, school resource officers, we covered that at the meeting and we had a discussion as far as our own employees, you know, we we got seventy-five people from our employees working from home. So twenty of them are limited, some of them are doing some work from home and and then we got over three hundred of them still working here, so those are the figures pretty much for our, for the county. Also, yesterday, I also was online with Minnesota Rural Committee Caucus, Rural Caucus, excuse me, where the, Grant's already said, where the, some of the stuff that's covered, the State of the Union message was covered, the bonding bill, the MRC wants to make sure that broadband's going to be covered by that, very concerned about the funding for that. And county-based purchasing was discussed. Long discussion of COVID nineteen and the sales tax reduction. Also, they were talking about property tax relief, you know, who's going to implement that? Do each county, does each county take care of their own? Whether there's going to be property tax relief, do we defer that? That's a state thing, but do we defer penalties and stuff like that? That's a county thing, so that's something that has to be discussed here. Because that certainly would affect our budget, you know, as far as, you know, our county, our county reserves, you know, as far as what we got in county reserves. Those are the two meetings I had. Steve, you want to give us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the PIC meeting that's been covered both by Commissioner Whalen and Gross. On Wednesday, we had a, we had a series of meetings on COVID-related time cards with Lori Johnson, Sharon Walls, Darren Brooke and Anna from from Human Resources, ensuring that we're properly documenting time cards in the event that we do receive some reimbursements. We had county management last Thursday, virtual meeting with all of our department heads. We're going to do that throughout the, every Thursday throughout throughout this pandemic to keep our our employees up to date in addition to the ongoing updates they receive from from public health, emergency management. Think that the the department heads have found that beneficial. Now, as as Commissioner Gross mentioned, last week, the tax statements went out and as we've received a few different calls on on the, on any, if there will be any property tax relief. We did have some conversations last week with our, with two of our three representative center, you can representative Marquart. I think the feeling right now in between them and AMC is that that any decisions that would be made is in addition, for property tax relief would would come from the counties. Right now, at this point, they feel that we're best, best to handle our own with our knowledge that we have of our own counties. And so that that would be something that we'll have to address if we so choose. Again, it's important to understand, as Commissioner Gross has mentioned, we do not have the ability to move the the property tax date from May fifteenth. We only have the ability to make the decision of whether or not we're going to abate any penalties that that come with that. We did participate yesterday in a webinar on COVID nineteen with AMC. They also are going to provide some guidance to all of our, all Minnesota counties. The hope that that AMC has discussed is they would like to see a common theme of how we deal with property tax relief, if that's something a county addresses, so we're more on a consistent basis. Again, I've talked, participated in the webinar with with COVID, they're, they're looking at, the MMB is going to be running, doing another assessment as far as our surplus and what effect the COVID outbreak has had on that. To this point, Minnesota has provided two different COVID response bills in which they've spent over five hundred and fifty-two million dollars at this point. And so with the, with the loss of of corporate sales tax revenue, right now, there's a strong feeling that that they, the surplus may have already been depleted. And so, but we should be getting more information on that. The federal government has provided a hundred and fifty million dollars of COVID relief to states. Minnesota's allotment is two billion and the Treasury Department's going to be working to determine how those funds are distributed between our our eighty-seven counties. Yesterday, as Commissioner Whalen and Commissioner Campbell mentioned, we had our our juvenile center meeting, we're hoping to have one final meeting. If all goes well with the inspections, we we should be in the facility or in the last thirteen beds on next Monday. Just a few other things from that, because of that, we're going to start seeing our trailer here within the next month from construction engineers is going to be, going to be moved. There'll be final things, will be some landscaping and we'll also have to do some final asphalt overlay where the, where the trailer has been. And so we should be seeing, we'll see one more change order before the board for the juvenile center. Yesterday afternoon, as as Commissioner Haney mentioned, I participated in the surge, surge plan discussion with Ascension Sanford, just amazing. We're in good hands with the planning that that's being done at that level. It's amazing to hear the detail of which they're planning. So just two other final things. One, as Kathy mentioned, the governor's will be reporting later this week whether he'll be looking to extend our stay in place through through Friday. I think there's probably, as she mentioned, a good chance that that's going to happen. So one of the things that that we wanted to make sure that we addressed as a county was for our ability and the citizens to be heard. Obviously, we're limited in who we're allowing into the courthouse. And so one thing I would just like to point out on our web page this week, we did, we did add an opportunity for people to either send in information to be read during the meetings or have the ability to be, to call in. And so if you go to our Clay County website and you go into the government tab, you go over into our, into our administration area for the board, let's see, I'm going to click on that again. We go down into our, into our county board. County Board of Commissioners. If you go over onto your, to the left side of this Board of Commissioners sheet, you'll find the request to speak. And so citizens would have the ability to fill this document out. I know we don't, we do not get a great deal of citizens that come forward, but we want to make sure that during this time, they have the ability to share their concerns. And so they'll have the ability to to request whether it's an item on the agenda or whether it's not on the agenda. Again, they have to put their name, their address, who's going to be speaking and if, whether or not they'd like to to read during the board meeting or actually talk on the phone. And so just wanted to make our citizens aware that that's an option, as this looks like it might go on a few more board meetings, we thought that it'd be important to to add that as an option. And then lastly...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jenny.
Is there a possibility for us to add that on the home website? I appreciate, I really appreciate that you got it on there, but just there are some COVID announcements on the homepage and it would seem that it might fit in there as well.
Absolutely, we can, we can make that adjustment here after the meeting.
Thank you.
And then last, lastly, we were notified late Friday afternoon that Homeland Security and Cyber Security Infrastructure Security Agency has determined that the DMVs, portions of the DMV are now considered essential. So starting yesterday, our DMV started to do some work with with dealer work. They're currently evaluating the the additional options or opportunities that they can provide. We still have to stick with the, with no face-to-face services and so there's still requirements that we would have to follow. And so Lori and her staff are determining whether or not there will be additional duties that we'll be able to to do during this time, so. And that concludes my report.
Okay. All right. Ryan, you have anything to add today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I brought the issue to your attention last week in regard to electronic alcohol monitoring that you have in the court. And we're, we're working through, I think, okay, the current ones and I think, as I also mentioned to you, our DWI amounts are down quite a, quite a bit. I mean, regularly, we would see one DWI per day. We really hadn't seen any for the last two weeks, but as of Monday, yesterday, we had two new ones on the lockup list. Julie had asked me with jail to look to ask that those individuals be provided electronic alcohol monitoring at county expense. I talked to her briefly about it and really think that I should come to the board and request the board's action and agreement to, to look to do that, where we would look to ask for any electronic alcohol monitoring that's on DWIs, new DWIs that are coming in that would require an electronic alcohol monitoring component, that we would do that at county expense, subject to reimbursement. And that's either reimbursement at the end by a defendant... subject to reimbursement. Uh, and that's either reimbursement at the end, uh, by a defendant, uh, potentially at sentencing. Or if ultimately there is funding through, uh, the, uh, emergency funding, state funding because of the pandemic, that maybe we would get some funding and we would ask the jail to track those individuals and then look to ultimately get that, uh, reimbursement through that way as well. But I think that would be appropriate in that, uh, in talking with Julie, she had concerns that those non-violent offenders would end up just remaining or staying in the jail. And again, they're trying to limit the volume that they have in there. So, um, I agree with her. I think it'd be appropriate to ensure that we have those people released and have that ability to get on electric, electronic alcohol monitoring, uh, subject to county expense and subject to reimbursement.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, so are you going to do that on a case-by-case basis? Initially, whether they have the ability to pay for that upfront or?
I think the issue with it being is with people going into court and the judges being there, trying to come up with a directive. I mean, we, we could do it that way too, say that we aren't agreeing to it, um, unless that person comes back in and asks for it. But I expect, I mean, the problem with that, letting the court know that, more than likely you're going to have defendants that aren't going to do it and then they're going to wait and request it from the court. And then they're going to be in jail that many more days. And so, I just have, you know, I've had, you know, discussions with the jail and Julie calling me, hoping to get those individuals out onto electronic alcohol monitoring. So that's the issue.
So you, you can do it where you just automatically are going to do that, to see that it gets done and then, but on an individual basis, can you look back and say, you have the ability to pay for that, so we are going to charge you for that?
Correct. That's what we would be doing or asking the, the board to support that, that we would be asking for reimbursement back by the individual at the time of sentencing and they'd have to come up with that money. They'd have to determine, the court would then determine whether they have the ability to pay and/or if there's any other emergency funding that could reimburse the county for.
Thanks. Is that a commission type of thing that we do, prove that or not, or?
I, I think, I think having a motion and, and support from the board of doing that would be good because I think that would help us to inform the judiciary that that's what the county board has, has confirmed. I think without it, um, the court could just say, there's not support for that and then ultimately determine whether they will or won't put electronic alcohol monitoring on an individual.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to, uh, to, for the county to pay that with the ability to go after reimbursement from those that can afford to pay it, so.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Moja?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's the only update I really have for anybody unless any of the subject to any other questions, I guess. Think so.
Okay, we got them.
Tom Colley?
My turn.